Good evening and welcome to the March 27, 2023 City Council Roundtable. I am Mayor Ross, and tonight's roundtable is being brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom, and tonight's recording will be posted on the city YouTube's channel. Welcome to everyone. Thank you for joining us. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll? Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Watten?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway? Councilmember Mayhew?
Here.
Councilmember Christensen?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Ross? I am here. So we have not heard Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there a motion to excuse Mayor Pro Tim Holloway from tonight's roundtable?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor Johnson, second by Councilor Christensen. All those in any discussion?
Nobody knows why he's not here?
My guess is he's probably late. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? This motion passes and unanimous to excuse Councilmember Pro Tim Holloway. So now we move to our first item of special business, which is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the roundtable agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved by Councilwoman Watten, second by Councilor Christensen. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Right, so it's unanimous, and the roundtable agenda is approved. So tonight's agenda item is a closed session pursuant to RCW 42.30.1404B for the planning or adoption of a strategy or position to be taken during the course of any collective bargaining proceedings or reviewing the proposals made in the negotiations or proceedings while in progress. So this session will go until 6:50 PM. City Attorney Starink, who should attend?
Thank you, Mayor. Yourself, Mr. Sourwine, myself, Mr. Boute, Ms. Ferguson, Mr. Chambliss, and Mr. Hornsby.
That sounds great. So no action will be taken following conclusion of the closed session. The council will adjourn directly from the closed session and will reconvene at 7:00 PM for our council meeting. So there be no further business to come before council. I will entertain a motion to adjourn to the roundtable. Actually, we don't need to do that.
Point of information?
Yes.
We're adjourning?
No, we're not. That's an error.
Okay, sorry.
We are not. My apologies. So we will go recess to the roundtable in a closed session. And are we going to have a separate link? Are we able to display our?
So Carson is sending out a separate link. We'll be able to present through that.
Okay. Okay, so we'll exit this Zoom and we will connect to a different one for the closed session. Right?
Do we have anyone joining that isn't already here?
Maybe you should have taken my advice and sit next to him.
I know, but he does need it for to show the slides. And maybe Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, we're not sure. So we are, we just finished a roundtable. Now we're convening with our council meeting starting at 7:00 PM. Council, please stand and join me. Saying the Pledge of Allegiance, and Councilmember Johnson, would you please lead us this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And City Clerk Dean, would you please note attendance? And please note that Mayor Pro Tim Holloway has arrived. We move to our first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Christensen. Councilor, is there any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
I would like to add two items to the agenda in council of the whole, one being the LTAC recommendations and the other one being council candidate interviews. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. This motion by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Christensen to add the LTAC and council candidate interviews to the agenda under Committee of the Whole. Councilors, any discussion?
I think it's a fabulous idea.
That's great. Councilor Vincent, do you have a comment?
No, that was it.
Okay. All those in favor of adding those two, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay? All right. We will, motion approves, and we will add those two items to Committee of the Whole. Is there any other comments regarding the agenda? Councilwoman Watten?
Under consent agenda, Mayor, may I ask to have AB 23041 removed and discussed after the consent agenda?
All right. And I don't believe it requires anyone can pull the, an item off the consent agenda. So we will do that, and we will move that to following approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions or discussion regarding the agenda? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? So we have approved the agenda. Moving on. Next item is public comment. At this time, we will provide time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda. A few ground rules. Snoqualmie residents who are not present have a right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in an efficient and orderly manner. Therefore, comments will be limited to three minutes. Please each, please wait to be recognized and state your name and city residents for the record. Director comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. And please note that this is not a time to ask questions of the council, mayor, or staff, or to engage in debate. And please respect the decorum of these proceedings, as we will do, offer due respect will be afforded to you. So with that, is there anyone that would like to speak to any concern that is not on the agenda? So please raise your hand online or in the chambers. I'm not seeing anyone raising their hands online. Nor in the chambers? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda contains approval of city council meeting minutes from March 13, 2023, regular meeting, claims approval report dated March 27, 2023, AB 23-038, Resolution Number 1642, awarding a public works contract to PSF Mechanical for the fire station mechanical upgrades project, AB 23-042, agreement with FCS for 2024 comprehensive plan capital facilities and utilities element, AB 23-043, approving Attorney General's Office opioid distributor and manufacturer settlement, AB 23-044, memorandum of understanding with IAFF Local 2878 regarding Article 15.4 Promotions. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second?
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilwoman Watten. Is there any public comment regarding any of these items that's on the consent agenda? So it would be two minutes. Please raise your hands. Not seeing anyone online raising their hands, nor in City Hall. Council, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? All right. Okay, we'll go back and take up the AB 23-041, amending the Snoqualmie personnel policies by rescinding and repeating, repealing Policy 2.33. And this will fall under? FNA. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please read the summary and motion?
This agenda bill recommends adoption of Resolution Number 1640. The resolution would amend the Snoqualmie personnel policies by rescinding and repealing Policy Number 2.33, which establishes a qualification of employment requiring that all city employees be fully vaccinated against COVID-19 with a vaccine authorized by the US Centers of Disease Control. Let me scroll down to the motion. Move to adopt Resolution 1640 and authorize the mayor to sign. May I have a second?
Seconded.
Just moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilwoman Watten. No, Vincent. Okay. Is there any public comment regarding these items? So please raise your hand. Not seeing anyone online or in City Hall. Okay. So we go ahead and, is there any discussion? Councilwoman Watten?
Thank you. I've asked to have this moved off the consent agreement after our FNA meeting last week. It was brought to my attention that we do have contracts out with other legislative bodies that may not have had the chance to catch up and match the, this action of removing the vaccination requirement. And so that's what I wanted to make sure that we're aware of, and whether we should go ahead and do this tonight, or whether we should allow those other jurisdictions the opportunity to catch up with us. I think the one department is the police because we do share services with the city of North Bend as well as the school district. And so that's the reason why I raised this. And perhaps Chief Phipps may want to chime in, or Attorney Stirbank?
Well.
If there's any concern.
I did talk with Chief Phipps earlier, and I mean, North Bend, it has been on the radar, and so they will be looking at our policy and considering it. And there's also a requirement for the school district for SRO. And so it would just be a requirement that whoever is providing police services to be vaccinated until that policy is no longer in effect, which at this point, 100% of our employees are vaccinated. And this SRO, you know, that person will also need to be vaccinated as part of condition doing that particular job. Councilor Mayhew?
So two thoughts in response to that. One is, should we not then have this agenda bill say that, that it doesn't take effect until the way that you just described it, Mayor, or alternately postpone passing this until those jurisdictions have signed off? So that's one thought. The second thought I have is, I've given a lot of thought to this agenda bill, and I'm okay with the agenda bill. We had a good discussion. I found very informative at FNA. If any of you have any questions, I think there are answers to virtually any question you'd have about why this makes sense, why we want to do this, and so forth. So this agenda bill, which is removing this requirement, I'm not opposed to, but do have a significant concern about public safety. And I'm just worried about how we're going to address that. I don't think it, I don't think that gets in the way of this, but it then, this obviates the concern. So now that this, sorry, the current requirement obviates the concern because everyone's vaccinated. Now we might have employees who are not vaccinated. And I'm worried about how do we ensure the safety of the public? So for example, if an unvaccinated police officer pulls somebody over at a traffic stop for speeding, are we satisfied that we've, that there aren't any public safety concerns that come up? So I don't think I need an answer to that in order to vote for this, but I do think there ought to be a discussion of that. There's council members wearing masks right now because of concerns about COVID and transmitting COVID. Going to a city council meeting shouldn't be a COVID-risking event. So that doesn't require us to have everyone that comes in the council chambers be vaccinated. I'm not proposing that. But I am just saying, I think there's another discussion that ought to happen of how are we satisfied that we really have protected, you know, other employees and the public in an environment where we may have unvaccinated employees? I'd like to see a discussion on that anyway.
Councilor Vincent?
To your first question, I don't see why we care what other cities are doing. Other cities are going to do what other cities are going to do. That doesn't mean that we have to do what they're doing. I think we can make our own decisions for Snoqualmie. And to your second question, I think that there are so many different opinions about healthcare and how we should handle COVID and how we should, whether or not the vaccines are effective, and whether or not anybody should be compelled to do any sort of healthcare that they don't want to do. I personally would never be compelled to take any shot and would therefore not want ever to compel anyone to do so. But I don't care what other cities are doing. That's not my purview personally. That's just my opinion. And I don't want to tell anybody what to do with taking care of themselves. I assume that everybody is going to do what is best for them. And, you know, I don't care if anybody's vaccinated. It doesn't have any effect on me as far as I'm concerned.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
So I'm pretty black and white. Mr. Stirbank, this action in no way contradicts or violates our contracts or working agreements with either North Bend or the school. Is that a correct statement?
That is a correct statement. With, for example, though, with the school district interlocal, which we are about to bring you a revised version, they have a requirement that all contractors performing service for the district, which would include then the city's school resource officer, be vaccinated. And similarly with North Bend, their requirements may operate similarly. So it may put the city in a position of, from a staffing standpoint, only being able to deploy vaccinated staff members to provide those services under, so not a violation, but it may affect the way we provide service.
My, I guess my point is, it doesn't violate the current contractual agreements we have. If those other entities choose to have imposed some of those, we can do that by memo, memo of understanding or contract provision at that stage, and we adjust. But as of right now, there's no restriction against doing this. And it's probably in our city's best interest to rescind this and get it out of the way at this stage.
Councilor Johnson?
So the reason that many kinds of diseases, we don't really hear of people getting anymore, like polio, are because of the success of vaccines. And the reason that we're in the position that we are now with COVID is because of the vaccines. That said, our employees, to my understanding, and I'd be happy to be corrected if I am incorrect on this, but are not required to get any of the other vaccines. And because the pandemic is at such a point that, that it is starting to be in a waning process by the numbers, that's what it appears, at least to me, based on what's been presented here and other information from CDC, et cetera, I think that we could put it into the category of other vaccines, that it is, it is a really good idea for people to get vaccinated. You're putting yourself and others at risk if you're not vaccinated, especially people who are immunocompromised, then, you know, they're unable to get vaccinated in the first place. But, but we don't require our employees to get other vaccines. So therefore, I think we're at a point where it wouldn't make sense to require them to get this one.
Before we go on, Councilor Christensen, did you have any comments?
I was just kind of soaking it all in as well. I think that for me, I do agree with what Councilwoman Johnson has said, and I feel comfortable based on what our legal counsel's advised, that it won't have an unintended consequence on the existing contracts that we have in place. So I, I'm comfortable with this going forward.
Councilor Mayhew?
Yeah, I just want to say I 100% agree with the comments by Councilmember Benson. I would not ever want to compel somebody to get a vaccine. And I find what other cities may or may not do largely inconsequential to this discussion. I completely agree with those points. The two governments I cared about and was referring to was the city of North Bend and the school district because we have contractual relations with them. So that was, that was the, was just trying to make sure we had covered that. It sounds like it's a little bit of a tricky deal. It doesn't violate our contracts with them, but we're just going to have to go through some steps to comply with those contracts. Sounds like we have a plan for that. So that's what my concern was. Separately from all of that, I was just making a comment that I think there's room for a discussion about public safety around, you know, where are we at with COVID? We think as a city, we can remove this requirement. Is there any other, are there any other requirements we think with regard to COVID that we ought to still be taking? I'm just asking for that conversation. Not tonight, but I think soonish, I think we ought to just have a discussion.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? All right. The agenda bill passes. That is amending the Snoqualmie Personnel Policies by rescinding and repealing Policy 2.33. Next item is moving on to ordinances. And it's AB 23-032 Vehicle Trespass Ordinance. This is the second reading of the ordinance, 1275. And this is safety. So Councilor Christian, would you please read the summary and motion?
How much of the summary would you like?
What?
How much of the summary would you like? Just the initial?
Yeah.
All right.
Because it had already been written at one point, so that's fine.
Okay. The purpose of the proposed ordinance is to allow the city of Snoqualmie Police Department, by a misdemeanor level offense, to hold suspects criminally responsible. And then for this, move to adopt ordinance 1275, an ordinance of the city of Snoqualmie, Washington, amending Snoqualmie Municipal Code 9.54, vehicle trespass in section 9.82010, adoption of the state law by reference and providing for severability and an effective date. Is there a second?
Second?
It's moved by Councilor Christensen, second by Councilwoman Watten. Is there any regarding this item? Get online to see if there's any. So please raise your hand. If there's any public comment? See none, and no one in the chambers raising their hands. Councilors, is there any discussion? Councilor Vincent?
Go to hallway, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
My only ask is that?
Can you chuck in the mics, please?
My only ask is that we be a little more blatant moving forward. Criminally responsible for what? This is in regards to vehicles being left unattended for very extended periods of time and giving the police force?
No, that's not this one.
This is, actually, this is?
There's my point. Criminally responsible for what?
Councilor Christensen?
So I can speak to this one. So this is a matter that was discussed in public safety, and the last city council meeting, Captain Lynch presented as well. As discussed, the purpose of legislation here is to close a hole that's in the current law and policy. Specifically, there's been kind of a mismatch between what the Washington RCWs provide and require for possession of a stolen vehicle and the specific elements that the King County prosecutors are requiring in order to pursue felony charges against folks who are being found in possession of stolen cars. Basically, by adding this misdemeanor level charge, the Snoqualmie Municipal Code, it gives additional options to hold those specific individuals accountable. For example, we've been sending a number of cases forwarding them to King County for prosecution, even when it appears that it would be a slam dunk case due to limited resources and their own policies on hand. Those cases are not being prosecuted. So what this would provide then is, to the extent that we are seeing those cases bounced back and rejected, it provides us the opportunity to go after them to a lesser degree, right? It would be a misdemeanor as opposed to a felony, but it would let us use our prosecutor on Issaquah to hold people responsible when they come to Snoqualmie to steal cars.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Watten?
And to follow along with that, it's all vehicles or the attempt to get into vehicles, and our officers can shed more light on this as well. Captain Lynch?
Good evening. Yeah, so the second part of this, this ordinance would allow for someone to be held responsible if they're going down your road in your neighborhood tonight and is trying car doors, and they're all locked. car doors and they're all locked. Did he make a substantial step at getting into cars? Yes, he did. But as the law is written right now, he didn't really break the law because he didn't enter the car. So this would give us a, another way of holding somebody responsible and hopefully moving them out of the, the neighborhood for any further, you know, crimes that they may commit.
Council Walton?
And a question for Captain Lynch. Has it been a problem for us to prosecute at King County where they're throwing cases out because it doesn't meet all four tests of?
Yes.
Vehicle theft?
Yes.
And, and one of the four is rather problematic.
Yeah, you have to prove the knowledge that the person knew that the vehicle was stolen. So if they happen to have a key that worked in the car, if they happen to have stolen the car while somebody ran into the store and it was cold and they wanted to keep their engine running, when we catch up with them, there's a key in the ignition, we, by the letter of the law through King County Prosecutor's Office, cannot determine whether they knew the car was stolen at the time. So they refuse to prosecute those.
Council Johnson?
But unfortunately.
Unfortunately, true.
Right.
And while it doesn't happen at the numbers that, you know, thank God, but it doesn't happen at huge numbers, it does every year, and those numbers are inching up, and those people go scot-free for having possessed somebody's stolen car in the city of Snoqualmie.
Yeah, and I think that last point is what I wanted to ask about is just reminding me from our last discussion, I seem to recall that the main driving force behind this is that the county doesn't have the resources to prosecute all the referrals that are coming to them from the general area, and so they had to raise the bar.
That's one of the reasons.
Or a reason, that's right.
I think that is a reason. I think there's, their budget cuts throughout the years and the, the low number of actual prosecutors doing the job right now.
Right. That's what I mean by resources.
Yeah, it doesn't really make sense that they would take every case like that. It would, it would bog them down.
Yeah, that was one point, thank you.
And City Attorney Turbank?
Just to add to that, it appears that the additional elements that the prosecuting attorney's office is requiring to be met before they will file a charge track, some of the elements that are articulated in the Supreme Court decision in State v. Blake, when they, they threw out felony prosecution of possession of controlled substances on the grounds that the state statute did not require a knowledge element. And without trying to get too deep into the weeds, the court said, well, there could be some cases where you still have strict liability, like you, you possess the stolen car. In general, they laid out these elements that, that go to knowledge, and it appears that some of the things that the county prosecuting attorney's office is requiring for possession of a stolen vehicle track, that suggests that they may be trying to, that this may be some additional fallout from the State v. Blake decision, as well as it aligns with their resource constraints, as the captain's outlined.
Council Benson?
Well, and, and it seems like one of the main reasons that there is an explosion in vehicle theft is that there aren't any prosecutions for vehicle theft anymore. And so that's what I, I like about this agenda bill, is that at least it says you're not going to get off scot-free if you're in a stolen vehicle. If you are in a stolen vehicle, you shouldn't be in a stolen vehicle. All right, you know, this is, this is good.
Any other comments or discussion? Seen it? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, the ordinance passes. Moving on to committee reports, is there any report from part, Public Safety Committee?
No further report.
Any report from Community Development Committee?
No report.
So first, committee report for Parks and Public Works is AB 23-014 Riverwalk Project, northwest of Sandy Cove, Consultant Design and Architectural Services. Council Benson, would you please read the summary and motion?
City of Snoqualmie seeks a contract with Burger Partnership, P.S., to conduct the design, public engagement, construction documentation, and bid documents necessary to begin construction on the Riverwalk Project northwest of Sandy Cove. And adopt resolution, move to adopt Resolution Number 1641, approving consult, consultant contract with Burger Partnership.
Second.
Moved by Council Benson, second by Councilwoman Holloway. Is there any public comment regarding this project? So please raise your hand. Have seen anyone in line raising their hands or in the council chambers? Is there any discussion? Chair Benson, did you want to lead off on this?
I think the value of this contract went down by about $39,000 in the contract discussions this week. But Dylan, do you want to come up and talk about this one?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yeah, so the change that happened in the Parks and Public Works Committee discussion on this contract is that there was a minor edit that resulted in the change in the contract value. The original agenda bill said something like $479,000, and within the contract itself, it actually had the correct number, which is this one, 440, 440,000. The difference there is that there was many versions of back of and us as we worked through what the most expedited process and best use of funding would be to achieve the project. And in doing so, too many numbers got moved around, and I accidentally put one on the agenda bill front. We never would have signed a 479,000 contract, but it's, it's corrected now. Yes, that's, that's the happenstance there. Apologies.
Way to save money.
Yeah. Not my strategy going forward, but.
Mayor Tim Holloway?
There were also discussions with the vendor during the discussion in committee. They were basically a supplier in standing, and we thought they would provide us the best option moving forward as they have experience in the project in the background, and we should see some savings as a result of that. I thought there was some commitment to go have that conversation, and was there any change in contract value as a result?
Bill and I went over the numbers and the breakout. The actual performance part of the contract for the design was not, is not the total amount. That also includes construction support, environmental permitting, and other things that are all reasonable numbers, so that conversation did not happen.
Council Mayhew?
Yeah, I just have a question related to Riverwalk. This is Riverwalk. Related to Riverwalk, we received a, some number of years ago, a grant, that's not correct, we received a, an appropriation, I believe, from the legislature that needed to go through some contracting with Department of Commerce. As a result of that process, we actually ended up spending, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars before being able to get reimbursed. And so my question is just, have we been reimbursed yet for that million bucks? And to the extent that any of this is covered by that state appropriation, are we in a position to, to be reimbursed as we incur these costs on a timely basis? Are we now in a position for that to happen?
Yeah. So the, the total direct appropriation from the state through the Department of Commerce contract is 1.479, something very close to that. We are eligible to reimburse for that in total, that total amount. It's the same number as it was back in 2015 or 16 when it was given to us. It's the same number now. And as, as a lot of people know, the part of this process was to try to make sure that we could reimburse for that total amount, and that will still be true. We haven't spent 1.479 in total of any of the projects, so I could not reimburse for that amount yet. We've spent in total somewhere in the ballpark of 790,000, I think, that are eligible for reimbursement. There is a reimbursement request sitting in a Washington Department of Commerce flowchart of reimbursement request systems, and I'm just making sure that they have the right supporting documents and things of that nature to get that completed. I don't know exactly how quickly they'll turn that around, but generally, they're pretty swift. And then I think part of this question is, how well does this design wave take, take from the past? And the answer is as much as I can possibly pull out of it. A large percentage of the contract here is actually trying to avoid that middle part of, of the contract. It can take a long time. So the design, what is needed for the design of a project to achieve its goals set forth by council and any documents that made it happen. And so what this contract is, and I can pull it up if you'd like, it lacks a lot of the design work that happened in the 30 and 60 design phases, which is looking into exactly trail alignments and things of that nature. What, you could kind of break it down into parts if we were baking here, five parts. There's a lot of permitting that's going into this current contract, which we have to redo because we've changed what our scope is. So we, and there's also been laws that have changed that are going to impact us now anyway. So that's a big percentage of it. We have the changes that we've chosen to make to make the best use of what we have now available. That's one part. The next part is to bring all those together into something that we could create a bid package of, designs, engineers, estimates, all that jazz. And then the last part is the support for that bid. So when we have contractors coming in and asking us, what did you mean by this section on this document? Then I get to go grab our contractor team and, or our design team, and they will explain it with me together. Hopefully, I have the answer, but anyway. And then the last part of that that's included is that they'll support the construction as well. So they will be there to inspect the, the different features. There's a lot of structural engineering type details that need to be confirmed by their structural engineer that they have on staff. So they will be out. I think the contract includes 18 visits during construction. I don't think that it will be necessary, but we have a little extra. Sometimes you need them, and it's best not to need, need them and not have them available. So I don't think it'll be necessary. We'll be able to cut some, some things back, but that's also part of this contract. And neither the 100% design or the bid support or construction support were ever part of a previous agreement.
Just follow up? So just maybe you can help me out. So five years ago, I made a decision that I would never vote for anything, any other spending on Riverwalk until we got the money from the state or determined we were never going to get it, in which case I would want us to deal with that, the ramifications of that, because we've significantly changed what we originally planned to do because, you know, in, in order to conform to, if you will, the requirements of Department of Commerce. So I'm just sort of looking, I guess, from your, so, so that's why I'm asking this particular question, is I'm trying to ask myself, you know, should I continue with my point of view, which is I'm going to vote no on Riverwalk until we get our money? 700,000, not a million, you're right.
Yeah.
Is a lot of money. It's a heck of a lot of money, and we've been holding the bag on that for five years. So I'm just trying to get clear on, you know, do I need to stick to my guns on that? Or are we really in a position where, okay, maybe we don't have the check, but we're sad, we're, we're confident we're getting the check now? There's no more impediments other than just processing through a payment? Because if that's where we're at, then maybe I, I can say, okay, that, that matter's closed, let's move on. I, I, thank you for your information on this. I don't have any questions about what you're doing here. This sounds fantastic. I'm really just trying to close off on the commitment I made about spending more money when we're holding the bag for five years. So any thought on that particular point?
Yeah, I, the, the work that we've done to get the contract with Commerce in place is, that was the, the risk point for this process. Now that we've crossed the line, the agreement's been signed, we can reimburse for what we've agreed to, which is those items. I, yeah, I, I don't, I don't foresee risk at, at this stage. I think there will be, we will be able to reimburse for 1.479 million. How much the future project costs and all those details as, as will come out of this new design, that part I don't know. But my best guess is, and I don't feel there's risk, and Bob can clarify if he thinks there's risk, but my understanding is once that agreement was signed with Commerce, we are more or less locked in, so, or they're locked in, I should say.
For the 700.
We did have extensive conversations with Commerce about the categories of, description of expenses that we had incurred and some back and forth on drafting the allowable expenses under the contract so that Mr. Gamble would be able to submit the request that's now pending. So you never, never certain until the check arrives. I, I think we've done everything that we could to assure ourselves that the incurred expenses and invoices, down to the specific type of contractor services, would be eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Council Walton?
Okay. As I'm reading through this, I just have a question because there's some, an element in this for the cultural resource assessment, and I'm just kind of curious, you know, kind of the breadth and scope and, you know, any sort of risks that the city might end up as shovels or moving soil and that sort of thing.
The cultural resource report is going to be a combination of an update and an add-on. So we have conducted some of the work already in the past iteration of it. That document needs to be updated and expanded upon to departments by the state. We've been, we've, so all of our agencies have seen that document, and we've worked through some things of it. The new version of it, we'll kind of have to do that a bit of again. So we'll have to review all those historical sites, any tribal significant sites and some things like that. If there are any in the, in the areas in which we are going to be impacting, we'll have to do any of the performance metrics they give us in order to try to reduce those kinds of things. But at this time, I don't foresee any major stalls of it, but definitely could impact the discussion and how exactly the trail gets laid out or any concerns of that nature.
Mayor, may I chime in?
Yes, absolutely.
On the positive side, on that particular piece, one area that was the subject of, of some of this prior work that Mr. Gamble just described, is no longer within the scope of the project. And, and so that by itself, we hope will make some of this addition, this updating smoother.
Thank you.
Mayor Tim Holloway?
So I apologize. I will be voting no against this agenda bill. I, this is discretionary spending on a good thing. I do not understand the rush we are in, given that I'm getting math errors between when it was presented to committee and when it's coming to council. I also think that we had discussion, and I viewed as a commitment, to go back and have a discussion with the vendor, that if we're going to carry them forward, because they were the last one on the bus for the first round, that there was some savings for having that experience on them, and that did not occur. Okay? For the expenditure amount we're talking, which is almost a million dollars, my preference is go to bid. You could talk to me that the experiences were something, but I, you, you didn't go have that conversation to tell me it was worth something. So I can't proceed forward until that occurs. Or you may proceed forward with my noble, depending on the others as well.
Mayor Tim Holloway? Or, can't hear that. Council Mayhew?
I'm troubled that we have one of the committee members feeling that we didn't do what we should have done coming out of committee. I'd really like to see us have this, that addressed, just from a process perspective. So with that in mind, I move to return this to committee for further consideration.
Second.
So it's moved by Council Mayhew and second by Council Johnson to return this to committee. Any? Any discussion? Councilor Benson?
Yeah, if we could just make sure that, that we fully articulate what we're hoping will happen in the, in the meantime. What do we need the staff to do exactly? And what do we need to discuss in committee? I think it'd be great to get this all sorted out, so.
City Attorney Sturbank, you had some clarification?
No, I was just going to, I appreciate Councilmember Benson's question. That was the clarification I was going to seek. Typically, if we're making, the city's making a selection of an architect or engineer, it's a qualifications-based selection, it's not done via bid, and then we attempt to negotiate a contract. If we can't reach a satisfactory conclusion, we would then turn to, you know, a different selected vendor meeting those qualifications. So it wasn't clear to me whether we are at that step and that the committee would like to bring another, or, or something else. And Mr. Gamble may have a better understanding than I do, but I was.
Parks Public Works Director Chambliss.
What we'll do is issue an RFQ and then start over. And just, we'll, we'll take care of that end of the process. When I reviewed the costs, they were reasonable for the amount of work that was occurring. When I thought it was just updating a design for a half million dollars, when we had that conversation at committee, I, I had concerns. When we went in depth and looked at the numbers, they were all reasonable numbers, but no problem. We'll do an RFQ, bring it back, and we'll get it done.
Okay, Representative Tim Holloway.
And to reflect on that, this is not a streets, water, sewer project in which there is a system knowledge that we have with our current design firms of the overall system and how we do things and pass everything out. This is an isolated project for a Riverwalk by the river, which is kind of unique and separate from that. So I guess I would, if we're going to go to that stage, I would prefer to go back to RFQ. I don't view supplier in standing as grounds to move them forward on the 450, you know, almost half a million dollar contract at this stage.
I just, they will have knowledge of the cultural site and that process that has been gone through. So we, yeah, so no problem.
Councilor Mayhew.
Yeah, I, my, my hope in making this motion is that the committee, the three members of the committee will discuss what happens and ask. I, I don't think the intention is that any one council member would say you must do that. I don't think that that's what Councilmember Holloway's saying either, but I think he has a concern. I would just like to see the committee just go through that concern. I think it's entirely okay if the committee decides to send it forward to council with a two-one vote, if that is how it were to end up. So I don't think we necessarily have to make a decision on what would happen. I'd like to see the committee do that with staff as to what happens, but I would just like to see that discussion so that what I was perceiving as a council member who's on the committee saying, I thought we agreed to do certain things and they didn't happen, that, that was what was troubling to me. So I would just like to see the committee work through this and decide what they come back to us with. If they disagree, fine, but just not a situation where someone says, wait a minute, I, I thought something didn't happen that I thought was agreed to.
But I, I am not hard set on RFQ, okay? But I do want to close out on that conversation.
Can you talk in the mic, please?
I am not hard set on RFQ, but I do want to close out on the conversation we had in committee. We didn't do that.
You're standing there.
Well, yeah. No, it's, it's separate, right? So I want to make sure that also we address maybe the benefits of this project as well. The return on investment is potentially, I think, very substantial for this community. When we think about our long-term vision and we bring tourism into that conversation, the Riverwalk is an element of that overall. We think about, we're going to get into maybe some of our forecasts right eventually down the road. The idea is to draw tourists right downtown overall to take advantage of all the fantastic businesses that we have here. And so that drives additional operating revenue that will help to, our kind of structural imbalances that we have overall, that we fight on a pretty consistent basis with the property tax system that we have overall. So this project itself and what has been ongoing for, you know, nearly a decade at this point, is to really benefit us, not only just from the aesthetic purpose of having a trail system, but overall, there's a lot of value, I think, with this project. And so I just want to make sure that that's brought into this conversation, not just the cost, but also the benefit as well. Thank you.
Councilor Johnson.
Thank you. Yeah, I put my hand down just a minute ago. I probably shouldn't have because I was going to say exactly what Mr. Buta just said, that I certainly am very much supportive of this project underlying. It's just this one little tiny procedural thing, but this is going to be a massive benefit for, for our city, and I'm positive that we're going to see it through to the end.
Okay, but I'm seeing that we followed the procedures, right? Because it's, this is consultant and there's certain requirements for consultants and it's also using a contractor that we have, has a lot of experience.
What I mean is that there were concerns brought up at the committee that getting addressed, we were expecting to get addressed, and that that's the holdup. And then if we get that done, then I'd be willing to bet that we're going to be in a good spot.
I, I am not saying there was process violation.
Right, okay. We just need to stay.
Maybe I used the wrong word.
We need to stay at administrative and state policy level. They followed the rules. They've gone back and talked with the, with the consultant. Yes, Councilor Johnson?
I apologize for using the word process. I guess I, I misunderstood the, the use of the term in this context.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to table, move it back to Parks and Public Works. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. This motion passes and we'll be going back to Parks and Public Works. Thank you. Okay, next up is. Oh, I'm going to talk about the council chambers AV update in our, by our city minister, Mike Sarwine.
Well, good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. We had a good discussion at the last F and A meeting about this, and there were a number of questions the F and A committee asked that we're still in the process of researching. You might have noticed that staff's been a little busy the last week or so. What I can tell you about the project is there's basically three pieces to it, and I'm speaking as a total IT geek, you know, I'm such a Luddite, it's amazing. We will be replacing the microphones. The microphones will be what I call smart microphones. They will have the functionality to be muted, and so you'll have lights on them to know whether, when they will or won't work, rather than them just being on. We're hopefully also that they'll be able to capture your voice if you're sitting back a little bit further, as many of us, including me, do. The second big change to it is we'll be adding monitors so that you have monitors on the ceiling here facing the council that you can look at and actually, so everybody's not craning their, their neck like this when they're trying to see what's on the screen. Those monitors will also be on the other side facing out toward the audience, so that the audience will be able to look directly at the council members and see what's on the screen over here at the same time. The third big change is we're going to be putting in aerial microphones. So when we have a meeting, for example, where all the tables are in a square in the middle of the room, we'll be able to have the microphones from the ceiling picking up and recording the meeting so that we can have those sort of meetings out there without having to, you know, pass the microphone around. We're also going to be replacing wiring throughout the, throughout the building. It's my understanding, and this is where I'm going to show my complete lack of knowledge, is the wiring to this camera is not powerful enough for the camera to actually have its full functionality. So we'll be actually improving the wiring as well. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have. Like I said, next F and A meeting, we'll get a presentation from our IT folks addressing the questions that were raised at the last F and A meeting.
Representative Tim Holloway.
So I'll reiterate two things. One, there's not a council member here that doesn't have their laptop in front of them. So I'm not sure if it's in council up, up here. Okay? I do think maybe city clerk could do with another monitor. She's got a lot of stuff to do while we yammer on. That might help her out, but that's something you guys could think about. Two, I have some concerns about the mute control on the mic, on the mics. If I choose to say something stupid, it should be on the public record and not be filtered, whether the mic is filtered or not. Okay? Or if I say something brilliant, otherwise, but public, open public meetings and the comments of the council or the comments of the council, they should all be captured.
You, you have the option. It's my understanding that you have the option to turn it on and off, and also understand that we were guided by input that we got from the city council. Prior Mayor Pro Tem did, you know, provide us with a list of, of asks and requests from council members, and that's really what we used to design the project.
Councilor Benson.
And these are, these are going to be smart microphones, so you'll be good. You, you, you won't.
Will they be iPhone, i microphone?
Councilor Mayhew.
I am just impressed with the optimism that Councilmember Holloway has that he'll say something brilliant. That's very impressive. So that alone is enough to get the right mic for him. But I, I do, I do think, what I'm hoping is that as this goes through the process, that there was some discussion of sort of how many monitors, you know, are needed for the room and, you know, some discussion, which I think Councilmember Holloway's kind of alluding to is, do we need that many? Would some lesser number maybe suffice? So I hope we're maybe just giving a rethink of that, and maybe there's like an option A and an option B or something, maybe, but it did seem like there was some valuable discussion there about, you know, one of the things about a wish list is, you know, you know, I, I give a Christmas list to my wife every year and it, it would be, it would be an impossible thing for all of those things to actually happen in one year, but I'm hoping for some things off the list, not necessarily all of them. So I, I just want us to maybe just try to be cost-conscious and make sure we don't, you know, overdo this, maybe when something lesser would be enough, and maybe give us a couple of options so we can kind of tune in and say, yeah, that one's maybe enough, maybe not the full one, something like that.
Yeah, and that's what we plan to come back to F and A with. And, you know, my wife doesn't give me that big of an allowance, and trust me, my Christmas list either. But yeah, I, you know, you make a very good point that, you know, we, we need to come back with, with some options, and, and that's what our IT folks are working on.
Cool.
Councilor Christensen.
Yeah, I, I think additional options would be great. And then the other question that I had is, is whether as we go forward and have meetings, how difficult it will be to either have the microphone on in the rest of chambers? Just, I would worry about it making it unclear as, in case there's side chatter, in case there's a lot of people here, things like that, for the public to still be able to hear the conversations happening here.
That is definitely something we discussed with the consultant is, you know, we don't want to be capturing the conversations from the public in the back of the room and have it being on, and have it be on the recording.
But we do use it for, really like all employee meetings and leadership meetings, and so having the mics and also when we have others on Zoom, instead of passing the mic around, it'll capture that.
Absolutely. I was just more worried about the unintended consequences and hot mic incidents.
I mean, the, the whole idea is to basically have a system that we can customize for individual meetings.
Councilwoman.
While I, I appreciate the comments about leaving all the mics on, it also helps force Robert's Rules of Order, and you only get your mic turned on when you're recognized by the chair, and the same goes at the podium. And there's one other nuance, and that is, I believe there's still two wireless mics that are part of this package that could be passed around as well. And, and we're going to have a much better mic at the podium. I, I don't know, some of it comes from like, I don't, wrestling federation where you pull the mics down perhaps, I don't know, but this is only the early iteration of, of what's being proposed until we have final numbers, right?
Right. Yeah, I mean, yeah, as a practical matter, the consultant is preparing a contract, and the contract will need to be approved by the council.
Councilwoman Mayhew.
Yeah, I just want to make the point that under Robert's Rules of Order, there are a number of motions that must be made timely without recognition, or may be made without recognition of the chair. So I would hate for us to actually impede proper functioning of Robert's Rules of Order by turning mics off of council members. I hope that's not one of our objectives.
Councilwoman.
Point of clarification, the mics have a control to turn on and off, so if, if you have a point of order, you can turn your mic on. They're just not all on, all 10 of them up here.
Right.
So yes, good point.
Councilor Benson.
I, I think, I think all the mics should always be on. I think that, you know, if, I, I just think it's better that way. I don't think we should have electronic control over whether or not people can speak. I think it's, I think the way that we've got it is good. I don't think we have a huge problem with people steamrolling anybody and, and that's a functionality that I think could be used potentially nefariously, and I'd rather, we didn't even have that option. Just my opinion.
Well, it sounds like we'll be bringing it back to F and A. Any other comments? Should we move on to the next item? Okay, seen none. Thank you, City Administrator Sarwine. Next item is AB 23-048, Approval of Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Recommendation, which is LTAC. Councilwoman Holloway, would you like to read the summary and motion, please?
And you all should see, have a paper copy at your seats. Post this meeting, please include this in the minutes. Summary, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee responds for requesting, receiving, evaluating applications requesting funds for tourism-related programs in Seculmoni, determining eligibility of applicants and providing a recommendation of hotel motel tax allocations to the city council. According to RCW 67.28.1816, Section 2BII, the municipality may choose only recipients from the list of candidates and recommended amounts provided by the local tax advisory committee. With that, move to adopt the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommendations for 2023 funding allocations. May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Holloway, seconded by Councilwoman. Is there any discussion or public comment regarding this item? So please raise your hand. Not seen anyone online raising their hand or in council chambers. So Mayor Pro Tem Holloway?
And you'll see in the attachment in here is the actual memo recommendations from LTAC. The total requests we had going were $192,400, and what we have is $175,000 to allocate. We'll advise the committee meeting was quite enjoyable, with a lot of give and take by all parties involved. Matter of fact, there was at least one additional party on here that we called in to make sure it was, what we were doing was okay with them, because it was their request, we were slightly tweaking. And again, in terms of give and take to get to the target, we came to solution with all the parties involved. On that basis, again, I ask for your approval of this, that we can move forward and get this out to the community and, and get these activities off and running. We have at least one, maybe more pending, holding for these funds to be made available.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? Councilor Christensen.
I, I appreciate the additional information, just that everybody who was affected was involved in the conversation, and that's fine.
Last part?
I said, I appreciate knowing that everyone whose funding was affected was involved in the conversation, and that they signed off on that. That's, makes it easy for me. So thank you.
Any other comments? Councilwoman.
And just the sense of urgency with this, and that's why I'm, I'm in support of it, and I assume everybody else here in council concurs, and that's our tourist season is coming up, and there's some important things that are contained in this that they're waiting for funding, and it is almost April. So that's the sense of urgency of getting this done, and I appreciate Mayor Pro Tem Holloway bringing this forward as promptly and quickly as possible.
Great. Councilor Benson.
And I'm looking at this list and figuring out where they made up the delta and quibbling in my mind about whether this number should have gone down or that number should have, but really, I'm just glad I wasn't on this committee. So thank you to those of you who.
So thank you to those of you who did the work.
It was fun. Come join us.
All right. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? So it's unanimous, and we are approving, approved the lodging tax advisory recommendations. So thank you. Next item is Mayor Pro Tem Holloway. It's conduct candidate interviews and consider appointing a candidate to fill vacant position number five. And we do have a special meeting tomorrow regarding that. Do you have this added to the agenda?
At this stage, we do stand at seven candidates instead of eight. I sent to all of you last night an email, kind of a selection of questions, as well as questions that were used in the past that I kind of looked at but didn't include. We really only have about 15 minutes per candidate. My question to you guys at this stage, are the questions at least I put forward okay? Would you like to pull one of the other questions forward or proceed with what was submitted?
There are candidates on the line, just so you know.
Yeah, I prefer not to get into, let's talk to them by number.
Councilor Watten?
Can we refer to them as numbers?
Yeah.
Okay. I like number four especially.
I agree.
Not Chandler with numbers, right?
Not candidate numbers, question number four.
Question four as written.
Yes.
Yeah.
Really? All right. Really? All right. And you don't disagree with the other questions?
No.
Okay. So if we're okay with those questions, we'll proceed forward with the questions as submitted. The intent is that we will bring candidate in, and in a round-robin fashion, we'll say we start with Jim on the first candidate. He will ask them the first question, I the second, and we'll proceed on through and just keep rotating through the candidates to do that. So everybody gets a chance to ask a question and be responded to. If that is acceptable, we'll go through the candidates, again, 15 minutes each, and then go to a closed session afterwards. I'm thinking about an hour, we'll have to see. Coming out of that, we will either select a candidate or proceed on a path forward to some set of candidates or some other action afterwards to come to conclusion eventually.
Great. Councilor Christensen?
I was going to say, I also like to question number eight as well.
Number eight, would you propose number eight be substituted in for one of the five, one of the, yeah, five above? Five current questions? Again, 15 minutes, I'm really pushing it with five questions.
I would swap it for E potentially, especially if we're adding in question number four.
Hmm, looking at E.
Councilor Watten?
Oh, sorry. Looking at E, I think it already embeds number four.
Yeah.
Okay. So I would withdraw number four in lieu of Councilmember Christensen's question.
Councilor Mayhew?
So I might not be following this conversation, but my thought is question A is unnecessary because it should have, it should be unnecessary. And so therefore, if you're looking to add a question in, maybe A can come out to make room.
Did we get all our numbers?
The A being unnecessary because if we go to the very beginning, number one, that already should have been covered.
Any objections to that change?
Councilor Johnson?
I think that the, at the very bottom, or alternatively, move, there's a date there that doesn't make sense to me.
Correct.
Yes.
Oh, that'll change. I'm sorry. I was standing on the shoulders of those in the past and pulled forward.
Didn't even write these questions.
I ain't writing.
D also needs to be revised for grammar and spelling.
I think that says, Reverend, earlier, D has interesting language.
Sorry, Brian.
I am not an English major.
No, no, no. This is calendar major.
No, I know. It's right there.
That word is wrong.
Oh.
All right. Did we?
I will mention to my editor, she missed one.
Anything else? Any further discussion?
Did we document those changes that we're going to take out question A?
I didn't know.
Oh.
And bring forward, what was it? Which one did you want, Kara?
Eight, please.
Eight. Eight, all right.
And, sorry. Just for clarity, then the other four, we're going to stay the same.
The other four remain the same, and those will be our five questions.
Councilor Watten?
Point of clarification, we are aware of eight candidates. We have not seen which are the remaining seven. Is that true? Or am I?
But the remaining seven are a subset of the eight.
Okay.
The packet has been updated online, so the seven that are online is who the candidates are.
What date was that packet sent out?
You can go to website agendas and click on the meeting tomorrow night, and they will all be there.
Agendas, okay.
Yeah. For clarification and public record, I do ask that this be added to the minutes for tonight, but that they not be published until after tomorrow night? Is that allowed? Does that work in the flow?
Well, the minutes won't be approved until the next council meeting.
There you go. Okay.
Right. Anything else?
Hopefully, they would be approved.
All right. We'll move on to mayor's report. Okay, so this past weekend, we had a two-day council retreat, and I'd like to thank everyone again for attending. It was staff and also our directors, and we covered council priorities, governance, and strategic planning. And there's also a lot of work that went on to make it successful. So thank you again to a city clerk, Dean, city administrator, Sarwane, IT Andy Latham, and Chris Miller, and communications Dana McCall, and also Mayor Pro Tem Holloway and Councilwoman Watten, who helped define the agenda with a facilitator, Una McLendon of Creative Strategy Solutions. So I provided public comment last week also to the GMPC regarding our comments on UGA expansion policies. And the two UGA expansion comments were included in a letter that had submitted to the GMPC. So it's a Growth Management Planning Commission, and the recommendation was for deletion of the year 1994, which establishes eligibility for the four-to-one program, and also requesting that they add language implementing the Senate Bill 5593. And if you recall, that allows you to use properties to swap, so you can swap properties that's currently in the city, out of the city, and then bring in other properties. So this has to do with the property over near I-90 and State Route 18 and Parkway. The comments are actually, were received by other communities that are in the same situation as ours, and also Mountain de Sound Greenway also commented, provided public comment in support of our recommendations and for Secomi's UGA. I also presented to the school board last week our community, about our community center expansion and pool concepts. There's a lot of good discussion, including considering more discussion regarding investment for swimming curriculum and competition. So that is all I have for this evening, and we will move on to, I believe it is, committee and committee liaison and commission reports. So do we have any reports? Councilor Watten?
I'll go first. Thank you, mayor. On March 23rd was the meeting of the King County Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee, and then we meet seven times a year, and it was our turn this week. And we had Chief Perry Phipps, Stephanie Butler, and Stephanie Butler present on behalf of the new program that we've launched here for the mental health specialists and the impact that it's having. Also present was Councilmember Mary Miller from North Bend. These meetings, it's kind of interesting, they're not subject to open meeting acts, however, to the Open Meeting Act, however, if you're interested in attending, please let me know. We covered other things, including the Blake decision, and then in the afternoon, we followed up with an SCA caucus meeting, the seven representatives that sit on the committee meet. And we did talk about the potential closure of the King County Jail as well, which needs to be on everybody's radar to see what the alternative would be. So that was that. So, by the way, Chief Perry did an amazing job as well, as well as Stephanie Butler, and it raised a lot of interest from the other member cities. So good work. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other liaison updates, commission updates? Okay, what about regional updates? We have quite a few. You sit on different regional committees, PSRC, Economic Development District Board. Councilor Mayhew, do you have any update?
I have no update, mayor.
King Conservation District Advisory Committee, Councilor Christensen?
KCD meets next Sunday, April 11th. I don't have an agenda yet at this time, and I don't think there's been a further update on PIC since the last one that I provided. The only other one would be the Secomi Valley School District, but I was there for your presentation virtually, so nothing further.
Great, thank you. Now, King County Flood District, I sit on that committee, and the first meeting will be actually probably Tuesday, it's this week, Tuesday or Wednesday. I guess it's Wednesday. I also sit on the Regional Transit Committee, and, you know, they talked about recently about Metro is working on, they have rapid ride buses, and they're looking at instituting the K Line, which would be along I-405 between Bellevue and Kirkland, and our line, which is between downtown Seattle and Rainier Beach, linked light rail. And so that's, those, but probably be implemented by 2026. Secomi watershed forum, Councilor Benson, have you?
Nothing to report. The next time we meet, I think, is in May, so it's like a quarterly meeting.
Thank you. Councilor Watten?
Yeah, also in the legislature today, in the House, the Transportation Committee passed the SR18 funding that included the federal funding that was originally in the package, and now it moves on to the House floor, and that's the Senate bill. So it's waiting for a decision from the House floor. So that is very good news.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other updates? Okay. Our next item is executive session. So executive session pursuant to RCW 42.301101, little i, little i, and three little i's, discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions, or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency or the governing body or a member acting in an official capacity is, is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. Specifically, litigation has been specifically threatened to the which the agency or the governing body is likely to become a party, or legal risks of a proposed action or current practice that the agency has identified when public discussion litigation or legal risks is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence. We also then move into a closed session pursuant to RCW 42.30.1404B for the planning or adoption of a strategy or position to be taken during the course of any collective bargaining proceedings, or reviewing the proposals made in negotiations or proceedings while in progress. So the first item would probably be about 30 minutes, and who shall attend, city attorneys, to drink?
Myself, Mr. Sarwane, and Ms. Ferguson, if she's amenable to staying.
Okay. And then we would move into the closed session, and at that point, we will need an additional probably Duberté and management.
Mr. Hornsby.
Mr. Hornsby. And?
Chambliss.
And Mr. Chambliss, yes. And how long do you anticipate for that?
Forty-five minutes.
An hour, just go an hour.
Remember your name on the list.
What is it? Eight fifteen, then forty-five? Eight nine thirty? Okay. We will set it for, it'll probably be nine thirty until nine thirty, and then we will come back out, and most likely there's possible action will be taken. So we will come out of the executive session around nine thirty PM. So we can take a five-minute recess, and then we're convened at eight twenty-five. And are we going to, we probably have it down here. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. But we will disconnect from the Zoom, and we'll have our, we'll have the meeting here. Okay.
Bob, is there any objection to those who are invited to the second meeting also sitting through the first meeting?
They're not needed for those first topics, so.
Please, we're going to kick them out for a half hour, bring them back in?
Should we do it? I think so.
Smokey, please.
Yep.
We can't do them.
Get a cup of coffee.
No, because that's just a different set of people. Either way, you do it, there's a certain set of people floating somewhere.
That's true.
Yeah, back out of executive session and closed session, and it is now nine forty-five PM. And is there, there is an action to be taken? Mayor Pro Tem Holloway?
All right. Move to approve the settlement and release agreement between the City of Secomi, Washington State Department of Retirement Systems, and authorize the mayor to sign. Do I have a second?
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Holloway, second by Councilor Christensen. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay?
No.
So we have four, and Councilor Benson voting against. All right. Seeing no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
So it was moved by Councilor Johnson, second by Councilor Watten. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Glad we could leave on a point of agreement.